Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this March 1st, 2022 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. This decor on this desk is courtesy of our building official, who is a Louisiana native. And today is Fat Tuesday, so happy, happy Fat Tuesday. I think you said the proper, the proper phrase, not in French, is let the good times roll? All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. He brought lots of Mardi Gras celebratory accoutrements today, so thank you for that. So the meeting is called to the order, and we're going to begin this meeting, as we do each meeting, with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer the prayer, and I will ask that you stand with me, please, and then Councilman Fann will lead us in the pledge.
Let every heart pray. Eternal rest of God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for this beautiful day, we thank you for the city. Our prayer, oh God, for equality for all people, everywhere, every country. I pray for the war-torn country, and our prayer, oh God, that everything we say and do in this meeting tonight will be fair and pleasing in your sight. Bless us down, keep us, in every heart set. Amen.
Come in and pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Kittrell, if you would call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. And everyone is blessed, too. So now, before you, you have the minutes from the February 15th, 2022 City Council meeting.
I approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love. Are there any additions or corrections requested? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from February 15th, 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. They are approved unanimously. We'll now go to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone who's here can speak to an item that is on the evening's agenda. There is a public hearing this evening. It is for a preliminary master development plan located north along Hollow Pike and east of Big Station Camp Creek Boulevard. If that is your concern, you may wish to wait and speak under the public hearing, and then if you have an item of concern that's not on the agenda, then you can speak to that at the very end of the meeting. But right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is open. You may come forward, introduce yourself, you'll have five minutes to speak, and we ask that you give us your address for the record as well.
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in the wonderful city of Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise tonight in total support of the plan with regard to our water and sewer program. I want to thank the, Mr. Kellogg and his fine staff for the work they've done, they've been working at this for several years, to develop a plan for us to work. There has been some people that were concerned about funding for this major operation. We're going to take this piecemeal because what we're going to do is, as we find grants and so forth that we need to do, we can be able to apply them to this, this plan that we have. First, you have to have the plan, folks. Second, then you go looking for the funding to do the job. Therefore, it will be incumbent on us to be able to do this in the future. Now, you got to remember another thing, too. This water system that we have that we're working on, subject to what the Castagien Springs and their, those group wanted to do, they've been buying water from us for a long time. So we're, we're talking in terms of more than just the city of Gallatin. Now, if they want to do their own little pickup and set up their own water treatment plant, that's their business. But I think it would be wise for them to stay with us because guess what? It'll be cheaper for them just to buy from us than to go over there. So that is a good thing.
Mr. DeBoer, are you getting to an item that's on the agenda?
Huh?
Are you getting to an item that is on the evening's agenda?
Yeah, it's on the agenda for the, for the, the plan with regard to, uh, Mr. Kellogg's plan that's coming up.
No, not this evening, it's not.
It's not?
No, sir.
Well, I thought I saw it on the agenda.
He was doing a good job.
Sure.
Anyway, anyway, Mayor, since you, since we got to watch the president at the while, I'll just shut up and go and sit down.
I just, I wasn't sure where you were getting to. All right, public recognition on agenda-related items. Anyone else wishing to speak, they may come forward at this time.
My name is Brenda Dotson. I live at 613 Demoss, and I'm talking about the number five, the ordinance appropriating 160 from various parks and recreation. I grew up in Clearview Heights and the community, this ordinance appropriation is not in Clearview's best interest. Clearview Park is a recreation center, is what it says on the, on there. It says Clearview Park and Recreation Center. A recreation center is an incredible multi, multi-dimensional facility that can bring places for recreation, health, learning, childcare, counseling, dining, socialization, and community, meanings of all in a single day. Well, I asked this committee, when is the last time y'all have took a look at Clearview Park? This community has been promised and have gotten their hopes up in the last year to get nothing. Now, the park is getting, and it, in this community, need to give up half of their money that I hear is happening. They're wanting $75,000 to come from Clearview Park. We have nothing over there to renovate. The park needs all new. This community cannot afford to give. This park needs every dime to go towards a new clubhouse, a new playground area, more activities for more of our youth, a better pavilion, and we need better upkeep over there. The recreation center now is very unusable. I also have, on my phone, pictures of the park, and I also have interviews from some of the kids over at the park. And right now, we don't even have bathrooms over there that we can use. We don't have water, we have literally nothing. So for, to take from somebody that has nothing, I don't think the community is in agreeance. Thank you.
Thank you. I will address that, just in case anyone else here has the same concerns. This was a funding allocation, the decision that was made, because the plans aren't in place to spend that money yet. I think the plans to spend money on Clearview far exceed that $75,000, and I don't want you to think that we're taking away anything. It's just not going to be utilized in this fiscal year because we're trying to plan the community center, and we're trying to plan the other amenities, and also work with the Shalom Zone for some other opportunities for the area. So there's no...
We have Rusty.
You may. I just didn't want, I didn't want a misunderstanding there. I think that was just a financial decision.
The things that we do have over there are not really usable. The park, the benches are dry-rodded over by the baseball field, the baseball field is not up, up kept. We can't even play any games over there because the, you're going to fall off, off those bleachers.
That's something...
So we literally have really nothing over there. My grandkids go over there, and after 15 minutes, they're ready to go because there's nothing there.
I thought we had updated the basketball goals and everything, but, but certainly I will...
But if you have to play basketball, everybody doesn't play basketball, and we have nothing past toddlers.
Okay, this is public comment, and so I appreciate your input. Certainly, your concerns are something that you and I can get together with Mr. Brown about because it sounds like maintenance issues and just some routine repair and replacement needs to happen immediately.
Yeah.
But again, this was for...
Because even the horseshoes, it's only one.
That's bad. But this is, this was for trying to install a playground, which we're trying to get the plan for the community building. It's going to be a lot more money going to Clearview, and it's going to be a much bigger and comprehensive plan.
But I, we would like to know when would that money be going to Clearview, because Clearview is behind.
Well, I, I think Mr. Brown, he's sitting there, he knows more than I do about where he is. I know he was trying to get some plans drawn up. I don't know if that is in process at this point, or if, but, you know, we, we are looking at ways that we can allocate funds so that we can execute it, you know, within, I'd say, a year to two years.
Well, we need stuff now.
But anyway, I thank you for your comments, and we, we are well aware. Thank you.
I'm here, my name is Betty Williams, and I reside at 304 Woodcrest Drive, and I also have property in the 603 Pace Street in the Clearview Heights community. I'm here for number five also, and I think it was about three years or four years that we came trying to come up with the facility before Mr. Austin died, and we went to Spring Hill to look at a facility, and we really thought that this committee was going to do something to help the Clearview. Even if the kids go over there to use the bathroom and to play on the playgrounds, they don't have a place to even go to use the bathroom. If you use the bathroom on the streets, you're going to get a citation. So I just feel like it's not fair to the citizens of that community to still have us to exist in that manner when money is going to other parts of the community. Also, I feel for much is given, much is required. We're given many taxes, and I think that there should be a requirement that the north side of town gets some of that money to help facilitate the development, the safe, the healing of that community, to save our children for the future. Because I know you're going to say, well, we got the Gallatin Civic Center. The Gallatin Civic Center is basically like a club, country club. You go over there in the evenings, the, the swim team has the pool, you go over there, the kids got to pay to go into. We need something that is going to be designed to save our kids in the community. Yes, the Shalom Zone is moving in the direction to facilitate some activities and doing some things and thinking about the renovation of the gym and some activities going on to the school, but we need both of those facilities. Anna D. Ligon, Sam Harret, Ed Martin, Martin, George Offit, myself, we worked in that community. We saved lives, we reformed lives, and it's time for us to look back to see what can we do to save the future. And that's, that's how I feel about it. And I am a teacher for 43 years, I'm retired. I do know if we don't put activities into the community, we're building jails, if we're going to build a jail, we need to break, build programs that's going to save the future. As I grow into my older age, I don't want to be afraid that I can't live in a city and not be safe because we didn't save our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Hey, hey.
Good evening, everybody, and to the mayor, doing an awesome job. We thank God for all of you, the whole board. My name is Bishop Williams. I, I'm 68 years old, I'm getting old, and I feel it. I, I grew up in, God, been here 68 years, never been anywhere else to live, but I remember as a, as a child coming up, I looked forward to going to Clearview because I was a farm boy, so dad wasn't going to have that often. But we, but we played, we had fun, swimming pool, swings, every merry-go-rounds, you name it. And, and I seen a difference, even we fought, would we be back in the pool the next day? I had some friends that clipped me for about $50. I knew they did it, but even after they did it, I knew, I said some words probably then my dad, I'm, he didn't ever find out, but I forgave them, and we played together the next day. So what I'm really saying, right now, I feel like it's only right, it's time. We don't, we don't ask for much. I know this is the north side, and we don't have to go into what we don't have, what we need to do, we need the time, we have plenty of time. I'm just being honest, and we know that. So we're not asking for a lot, but it needs some work. It needs a rest of it, it need, it, it, it needs, it's going to take some money, but these are our children. I have 10, and raise them up, try to, good, try to be good citizens, and yes ma'am, and no ma'am, but then when they get out of school now, they don't have, they really don't have anywhere to go. If their parents is work, who going to take them? I know we probably, we going to get our job and take them to the park or spend time, but that's why we went, we went to the park, and the park was full. I, I remember just like it was yesterday. So it, it made a difference. I feel like it made a difference in myself. I try to be a good citizen, taxpayer, don't ask for, I don't ask for much. We have a church, we built a church in this community, $2 million. It's about paid for. God has been good to us, and all I ask for, let's be fair, let's don't put this off, let's get this done. And I don't feel like, I don't, I hope I'm not talking out of the way over my head, but I know what, I know, it needs, it, we need, we need to do something. It's only fair. It's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. Y'all, I'm going to ask that you hold the chatter down in the audience because I know it's back there and it's affecting how we can hear, so it must be affecting how you can hear. So let's try and keep quiet and keep our attention on the speakers.
My name is Teresa Malone, I live at 512 Head and Track. I'm a product of the park. I worked at the park for years. I was a lifeguard, I worked in the clubhouse. Since I left that park, I, I'm a class of 74, out of the class of 74, I have a lot of classmates in here that I seen at the park. The park has gone down. Instead of improving, it has no improvement. We lost our swimming pool, we lost a big clubhouse that had all kind of activities, games. We can't even have a softball team to represent our area because I know we have the other park, but we would like something with our name, Clearview. I know this is, you know, you heard these stories before, but I'm here to tell you that when I was growing up, it was a place that I could walk to because I lived in that neighborhood. Ms. Ligon was my mentor over there, Mr. Offit was my mentor over there, I worked under both of them, and kids had something to do, they had people to look up to, to guide them. Mr. Offit was the one that told me that I needed to go to college. I went to college because of Mr. Offit and Ms. Ligon because they were my mentor from Clearview Park. So in saying that, I have seen no improvement. I've seen the park go down. I walk over there every day around the park and back to my neighborhood, and it breaks my heart to see how that park has went down. But in saying that, it's time. Time moves on, we shouldn't move back, we should move forward. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Homer Garrett. I've been around Gallatin a long time. I'm 72 years old. I played at Clearview Park, I swam in the pool in the merry-go-rounds, I was going with them, and it's, it looking there, I live up the street, I live at 348 Paradise Street, at, I can look down at the park. It's not, nothing going on for the children. I know you're hearing this over and over and over and over, but you need to hear this because we trying to do something for our families, we trying to keep them in contact. We want to keep them, well, we can see our eyes on them, and we can be able to take care of them. The park, yes, it need to be something done to it, and if you do something to it, I wouldn't mind working down there, keeping the yard up, or keeping the mold, or whatever you need to take, clean the bathroom, if it had a bathroom. We need one. You can't go to the bathroom over there, it, everything is locked up, keys on it, and you out there running around and keys out there, and why you going to use the restroom at over there? I said, these should expose around children because you ain't got nowhere to go. What you going to do, go off and leave your kids and try to go use the restroom and come back? Then what's happening? You don't know what's going on. They in trouble, something happened while you were gone, then you in trouble because you wasn't there with them. This is, this is something need to be taken care of, and I couldn't sit there no longer without saying something because it's been too long, too long, to not to have nothing done at Clearview Park. Clearview Park is suffering, the community is suffering because we not doing nothing and nobody trying to do nothing about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hey, that reminds me, whoever else is welcome to come up and speak, but I just wanted to tell you all that in the lobby of City Hall, you should find a QR code. We are in the middle right now of a master plan for all of our parks, and I think it would be very, very helpful if you went in there and took the survey and submitted your ideas and suggestions because as we're trying to navigate the improvements for every park, but I think Clearview is particularly challenging, different people want different things, and so trying to figure out what those best things are for that park is what we are kind of challenged with at this time. So I just offer that, you can find the QR code to the survey, or find it online on our website or on social media if you want to take that. I am sorry, sir, you may go ahead.
It's quite all right, Mayor. My name is John Boone, I live at 1137 Woodvale Drive in Gallatin. I am not from here. I moved here in 2017, I was blessed to marry my wife, who is a resident from here. I am from Atlanta, Georgia. Many of you probably visited Atlanta long ago and don't want to go there anymore. I see and have seen the same things happening, not only in Nashville, but it comes this way also. Where there is neglect, when I grew up in Atlanta, there were parks, there was recreation, we had baseball teams, and there was activity in all neighborhoods all across the city, until politicians, which I used to want to be, decided that they had better ideas for city growth and for the betterment of the whole. And so there were some areas that then got neglected on purpose so the gentrification could set in, properties could be bought for little of nothing, and new development could come, new tax base could come, so on and so forth. What they didn't understand or didn't realize perhaps at the time was that crime was going to come right behind that new development because what they had done was they had stolen the lives of the people who grew up in those neighborhoods. Their activities, their livelihoods, their culture that was vibrant was taken away. So I'm just coming to say, as an admonishment, where you don't have money maybe for the building, for the complete building and what you want to do or what you say you want to do in Clearview Park, there is money there for programs, there is money there to take and invest, as you said, more money is coming, praise God. But right now, you can take that money and invest that money into program development, put some people in repairs, restrooms, have some people over there to start a tutorial program, have some people over there to start a baseball team or whatever for that community, start doing programs in that community to let them know that they are part of the city and that they're cared about, and they're not going to be neglected. Start that now, and then wait for the funds as, for more grants or whatever, to do the actual construction and the things that you're looking to do to develop. I'm, I'm looking forward, I, I'm looking forward to Gallatin growing. When I grew up, not as much as Atlanta, but when I grew up in, in Atlanta, the population sign on Peach Street across from Piedmont Hospital said 869,000. Right now, I think it's over 7 million. Here in Gallatin, I think you've got about 45,000. That number is going to increase, and a good amount of that number is going to be people who are just like the people who are in the Clearview and the North Side neighborhood. You need to have programs for them, for the ones that are there now and for the ones that are coming. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me, my name is James Robb Jr. I work at the Gallatin Shalom Zone, and first of all, we need to look at ourselves because we in this position because we neglected from doing something at that park because there's money around, and it don't take much to make a softball league or basketball league or whatnot. I work at the Shalom Zone, and I've got a kickball league that we're going to do at that park. It's adult co-ed, 18 and older kickball league. I'm dealing with Yap and ENIC, NCI, a couple of those companies and some other people, so we're trying to do that this year. And Mike McDonald that works at the Gallatin City, he said he would give me the bases and the chalk and everything I needed to do to do that, so we're trying to do that. We're also trying to start a soccer league, and I'm not as old school as some of the old school union people, but I went there as a ruckus steward student, and the school had always been connected to the park, and we're not going to talk about the fence, but the school had always been connected to the park, and there's so many good things going on at the Shalom Zone that people don't know about. There's three women up there, they close their doors and they write grants every day for eight hours a day. We got an after-school program, about 30 kids come in there, they go out there and play soccer, they want to go on over there and play some baseball sometimes. That's every day. We got a music room started, they're building a museum right there, all this stuff is going on, and this is an opportunity, this is our time, and it's our time to speak up and stop speaking and start doing something, and we could still use a couple of dollars to help out, but we the ones that got to do it, y'all. These programs we're talking about and all these good things, we got to lead that. We don't need them to do it, we just need them to help us out, and we can do what we want to do at our park, at our school, at our union high, at our ruckus steward, but we could use that money. And I work up there from nine to five every day, and it's getting exciting. Fairway Golf Club has came up there, they've had a meeting, Brenda Dotson, she's come up there, we've done haircuts, gave away shoes, it's, the momentum is rolling right now. This is the time, and it's God leading it. I don't want to preach, I just want to thank God, but I'll let Mr. Alexander do that, but it's a lot of good things going on right there, and don't let the devil get in there and throw your mind off and say, ah, they don't need it, we could use it.
I think we're all supportive, sir, thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk.
How many haircuts you give away?
What we do, we did 100, didn't we? We did over 100 out and hairdos.
And we appreciate you.
And we had the lady, she was doing the hair, we, we gave away over 500 pairs of shoes.
Last time I was over here, I was cutting that hair, and I appreciate you.
Over 200 hot dogs. So, yeah, help us out.
All of you, I am Shirley Persley, live at 1278 Woodsfree Road here in Gallatin, and I'm sure all of you remember me standing up here about seven or eight months ago. Because of that, I'm going to be real, real quick so I don't get escorted out. The things that these people have said, they're good things, but what's going to help us is for all of us to pray and ask God to touch the minds and hearts of these people. You know, they, you said good things, but they don't care about the things you've been saying. Some of it, it's been fun, especially.
Ms. Persley, address the council, please.
Pardon?
Address the council, please.
Okay, okay, council. Like I said, the things that they have said, they're good things. Much is needed over there. Like I said before, much is needed across the tracks, period. Any and everything that needs to be done on this side of town, whether it's in the budget or not, it gets done. Like I said last time, it's not my job to know anything about the budget. I don't know where money comes from, but it comes from somewhere when something is needed on this side of town. You all know what's needed over there. But our jobs, we can't do anything else. We just got to pray and ask God to touch y'all's minds and hearts to know that we are all human, like I told these guys the last time. Same God made you all, made us. So we need things. And it's going to be up to you all to see that we get them. Last time I spoke, David Brown immediately took me outside, took me in the lobby out there. I thought he was going to take me to the elevator, but he didn't. He took me there and explained to me that the things was going to happen over at Clearview Park. We already got it planned out, it's going to be a stage and it's going to be, you know, several things he said it's going to be. Now, I'm here every week, but I've not heard when these things are going to start. Now, last week, I don't remember exactly what they were, but it was a couple of things that had money left over. You know, we had money left from something. So I whispered to the girl next to me, I said, maybe they only add that to the Clearview money. Little did I know that to come up here tonight and find out, instead of the Clearview fund growing, people are saying it's going to get less. I don't know what it's going to do. All I know is it is time. It is time for all of you to realize you aren't the only people, you know. And we are human also. And the people in Clearview Park, they need to have some things that they can enjoy. Clubhouse or, you know, park things for them to use, just for it to be better. Because it's bad over there, it's sad over there. But all of you, you are the ones that can do it. And we're asking you to do it. I think I better sit down there.
Thank you, Ms. Persley.
Good evening, council, I'm Michelle Juvance and I live at 1335 Long Hollow Pike. And I'm also going to say something about number five, agenda item number five. Because this is about priorities. And I am also here every week, like Ms. Persley. And I watch you find money for what you want. Like getting rid of the little green men and putting in fancy crosswalks, $138,000. And that's a priority to you above Clearview Park, apparently. And I also was driving down Brown's Lane yesterday, where several of you live. Some neighborhoods are more equal than others. There's an extra sidewalk over there down the middle of that road. But there's some parts of town that don't have sidewalks in front of the schools. And that's not okay. So you all need to get your priorities straight. Because you can find money when you want to, because I've watched you do it. Thank you.
You want, okay.
My name is Kristy Branum. I live at 215 South Purdue Avenue, Apartment C. We had a meeting at Clearview Park. I don't remember when it was, about a couple of years ago. And John D. was there. And he said we had a $2 million grant, maybe, is that what you said?
I'm going to apply for one.
Going to apply for one. And we were going to build a big old community center and I'm like, that was going to cost $5 million. And I'm like, if we can't get a couple of hundred thousand, how we going to get $5 million, you know? And two years later, we still have nothing. I just, it just boggles my mind how we had that meeting and you had those people convinced that all of that was going to happen. And nothing happened, nothing. I can't even find the words because I'm like frustrated. It has to get better. If it doesn't, it gets worse everywhere. Because it doesn't, crime doesn't only happen on the North Side, Clearview. It happens everywhere because when people get tired of being there, they're going to go somewhere else. They don't want to live there anymore, so we move into other neighborhoods. And we not the only people causing trouble. Our children want an opportunity to walk to the park and enjoy themselves. But it doesn't, it's not, you cannot enjoy yourself at that park. My parents, my mother died in August. And they have lived there since I was 15, I'm 39. Nothing has changed. If anything, it's, you got a track around there, that was it. But I just wondered what happened to the $2 million grant? Did we apply for it or what happened, you know? Because they were convinced that that was going to happen and some changes were going to be made and nothing ever happened. And it's disappointing, you know? I just wanted to say that I'm here because they said that they were taking money away and that's not okay. It's not okay to be split with another park that already had upgrades when this park hasn't had any, none. And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Just for your information, we did apply for the grant, we were unsuccessful. And I just want to reiterate that I think this council has all indicated their support for a community center. Maybe not a $5 million one, but certainly a community center.
Reasonable when it was said, but he had them convinced. And I'm like.
Well, we've applied, we applied for a grant, we were unsuccessful, but you know, since that time, other things have changed with recovery act funds and the like. So, I mean, it's, it's something that I think we are all supportive of. It's just, it doesn't happen as quickly. Nothing happens in government as quickly as we would like it to, certainly.
Certain things do, but not everything, I understand.
But again, again, there is a lot of disconnects about the different things that different people want. And, you know, and us sitting up here trying to design a park, that's when we need a lot of public engagement. And that's again, well.
And that's what I told John D., he was talking about the school and, you know, how he didn't want the school. And I'm like, but you didn't knock on anybody's door because my parents have two houses over there. And they never got a, what's your opinion? You know, nobody in that neighborhood or in that community got to knock on the door for their opinion. So when it does start to happen, can we do that? Can we knock on the residents' doors?
Absolutely. We'd love to have, you know, help in doing that. But right now, this park plan is out there, there is a survey. And it's a great opportunity to submit your ideas and suggestions. And I do very much agree with what Mr. Robb said about the forward momentum of Shalom Zone and the opportunity for synergy between the park and building. So I'm excited about the opportunities ahead. But you know what we don't want to do is we don't want to do the wrong thing, we want to do the right thing. And so I appreciate your engagement.
All right.
Sounds like you're going to spearhead something for us.
Hello, Mayor, councilmen, and to Gallatin. I thank the Lord for still being here. Matter of fact, I went to school with some of y'all. My name is Robert Keith Brinkley, 129 Berry Avenue, Gallatin, Tennessee. I've been around here and, you know, I seen mistreatment on both sides of the fence, if I may say. Even at our jailhouse, we have problems there, not only at Clearview. But when our kids and people go to jail, they get mistreated, they got gang members up there. They let them do whatever they want to do. But when it's on the other side, you get thrown in the hole. And that's the way I feel about Clearview Park. Seem like it's been thrown in the hole. Let's talk here for a minute. A restroom, a toilet, for you to use. You got to come and beg somebody to put a toilet or fix a toilet? That bad, when you can go to every other park in Gallatin, every last one of them got a toilet working. Huh? But Clearview can't get a toilet fixed? Somebody sick about this situation. But I got one thing to say. I don't put this against nobody up here. What I put it against is the people that voting. Fuck these people. You got to make a change. And the only way you're going to make a change is to have a voice and to speak out and do something about it and get up off your rear ends. Amen? We got to be about our father's business, our father's business is love. We got to love one another like we never loved one another before. Romans 16 and 17, it talks about discord. Well, when you start not fixing a toilet, you are putting discord and hatred in our kids. Because y'all got what you need at your place, but we can't have what we need over here. That's a problem. I didn't come here to sow discord, I come here to talk about love. And when you talk about love, you need to show some love. And not love when you can't get a toilet. We're not talking about the rest of, last thing I remember doing something at Clearview Park is when Mr. Bean died. And you put that track around there. But I don't got too old to even think about going around the track myself. Man, I tell you, sometime I feel like it. You know, I used to have good eyesight, good hand. Only thing I got now, blood is still running warm in my veins and tell somebody about the goodness of what Jesus is doing and what we need to do about the people that ain't doing. And what can we do about them people that ain't doing? Get them out of the office. Y'all pray for me.
Thank you.
And everyone else, I wasn't going to say anything, but the Holy Spirit. Oh, well, everybody know where I live. I live at 1137 Woodvale Drive. My name is Angela Boone. I moved over here in, I think, 81, down here on Lackey Street. And Clearview Park was there. I was excited because I moved from the country. And I thought, oh, a pool and had all the amenities. I started braiding hair for extra money. So I say that to say this, it was gone quickly. I represent Mr. John D. Alexander. We went out to get signatures for this fifth thing y'all talking about tonight. And, you know, God has really, really blessed us, more than probably we can imagine. A lot of us don't live in gated communities where you have to swipe a thing and put in a code to go in. And you got all the golf things and all the swimming pools and the clubhouses and you can't come in if you don't have a code. Okay, that's fine. But see, God got a place for all of us that's not made by man hands. And it's available to all of us. Now, they say we building this overpass over here. If anybody want to go to the civic center, they can walk across that bridge. Well, our kids not going to walk nowhere. Now, Shalom Zone have a before and after-school program or whatever. But where is the bus that goes to these different schools to pick them children up in the afternoons to go to Shalom Zone until parents gets out from work? A lot of people don't have a way to get their children from school to go to Shalom Zone to take advantage of what's going on over there. Now, a lot of our kids can't afford to go to the civic center in the summertime because I think it's what, $7, $11 or whatever it is? Some of them don't have $2. But if they had the Clearview, when they get out from buses, they can go right over there. They can swim, they can play on the merry-go-rounds, I remember all of that. And so y'all say you got money coming. May I ask, where is it coming from? Okay, so you said you had. Okay, you said you had a grant and it got shut down.
Now, we applied for a grant and were unsuccessful.
So why didn't it get approved?
It is not, it was a grant from another organization. They choose, and we actually were told that we had a very, very good application, but geographically, they wanted to go to a different area of Tennessee and they encouraged us to apply again.
Okay, so how did the money get approved to put those blinking lights down in the street to let us know?
That was a public safety issue where we had people that were constantly complaining and crosswalk signs that were getting knocked down every single day.
Unacceptable.
Well, I don't think it's unacceptable when we're trying to keep people from getting run over, but I appreciate that.
Well, you know what, if people can't stop and look both ways and cross the street when ain't no cars coming, then that's another thing. But y'all, I think some of y'all think it's funny. You know, because I know, I've been reading a lot of body language in here and people is tired, they wishing we sit down, they wishing we go home, they tired of listening to this, but guess what? We tired of being sick and tired. We not sleep no more. We wide awake. And we see the things that go on. We see the things that go on behind closed doors. Clearview Park is not being worked on because it's, some of y'all is not allowing it. Y'all know who you are and God know who you are. The wages of sin is death. And y'all better check yourself before you start looking out this window, start looking in the mirror.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items, this would be your time. Okay, seeing no one, we will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Moving now to item number one, which is public hearing on ordinance 02201-4. Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 57.50 acres from the agricultural residential to R8 PRD medium-density residential planned residential development district with a preliminary master development plan for Station Camp Creek located north of Long Hollow Pike and east of Big Station Camp Creek Boulevard. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing for sustainability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing. If you might like to speak, please come up.
And last call for public hearing on ordinance 02201-.
Okay, you all knew I was going to say something about this one because I have every single time it's been in front of you. Do I have to say my name again? Okay, Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Yeah, I live on Long Hollow Pike where I'm about two miles down the road from this development. My power was out for a little over 40 minutes this morning, my electricity. Apparently, there was some kind of incident, crash or something at the corner of Big Station Camp and Long Hollow Pike that might have took out a power pole. One of my friends who lives over there got stuck in traffic. There was a huge traffic backup, big traffic jam. So I'm just, I mean, you all know, you already know that my opinion about this development is that it's not the appropriate sort of development for Long Hollow Pike. And that's just my opinion, okay? But what's not just an opinion is the safety issues. I drive down Long Hollow Pike, past Big Station Camp all the time because my mom and dad live on the Hendersonville side and I live on the Gallatin side. So I drive down that road and then when I come back home, that's an inadequate intersection right there where they're putting in that Publix Shopping Center. And there're going to be a gas station there and there's 100 townhouses being built right there. And now there's another 150 houses that's asking to be approved tonight to be put right there next to Carrollton, and Carrollton's massive. So every time I drive on Long Hollow Pike from my parents back home, I think, this is just crazy, how did this get approved? Like to have this inadequate intersection with, I don't even know what you. Like to have this inadequate intersection with, I don't even know what you call it. It's like some kind of weird divider where the turn lane to go into where they're building the Publix shopping center is dangerous. So I don't know what the crash was that happened that took out the power line there this morning, but something happened. So it's just gonna happen more and more. And I think that the, that you all just need to pay more attention to like the roads and the infrastructure and what's going on before you just keep approving so many houses and like massive commercial on an inadequate intersection. Like the other Publix that just got built over on the one oh-nine, that is an adequate intersection for something like that. Like that's a big intersection, it can handle that. And there's a light that got put in there, but this is not an adequate intersection for what is being built there and now we're adding even more. So I'm just asking you to look, look at what's going on. It's just too much too soon. And then just to go back to my opinion again. It seems like all we're getting in Galton the last few years is townhouses and apartments and tiny lots. And that we're not getting enough variety of different kinds of properties. And so I, I'm personally just kind of disappointed with that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public hearing for ordinance oh-two-two-zero-one-dash-four? Seeing no one, public hearing on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-one-dash-four is closed. Item number two is second reading on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-two-dash-six. Vice Mayor Fennell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Galton municipal code, chapter three, alcoholic beverages, article three, beer division four, regulations, section three dash two twenty-two, restrictions on the issuance of beer permits. So move.
Question by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-two-dash-six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number three is second reading on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-two-dash-eight. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance updating the purchasing policy. I so move.
Question by Councilwoman Love, I'm sorry, George, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-two-dash-eight. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is unanimously passed. Item number four is first reading on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-ten. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating unspent two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen bond funds for fire hall number five and for the police gun range and appropriating thirty-four thousand dollars from local sales tax for the police gun range and I so move.
Second. A motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-ten. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-eleven. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from various parks and recreation lines for Thompson Park ball field lighting and I'd like to move for discussion.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by, I think, Councilman Hayes, is that right? Okay, opening the floor for discussion.
I just wanted to bring to, when I saw how much money was being taken from the different parks, I just wanted to discuss that a little bit more and find out more about that.
Um, Mr. Brown, I don't know if you wanna come up and address that. Um, I, 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 I think that these were all projects that are not going to happen within this fiscal year. And so since this is kind of an emergency need to keep those ball fields running, they were gonna transfer those funds from those line items to that emergency need, but I'll let you correct me if I'm wrong.
David Brown, Leesers Services Parks Director. Well, we wanted the hunt, two hundred and ninety thousand to be appropriated out of undesigned funds or whatever. These projects was gonna be done, some of them this year or whatever. We've been holding up on the clear view because of the grant and the recovery money. So yes, that, until the mayor gives me the authority to go ahead and move the playground, get ready, yeah, we was waiting on the grant. So we got turned down or didn't get approved. And they have said that we have a good chance of getting it again. Who knows? I, I think some of the recovery money could be used for some of the stuff. But I mean, it's not only Clearview Park, it's that even at Thompson Park, we in desperate need of some more skateboard, skateboard equipment. That, that was taken. The renovation, the renovation.
Guys, we need you to be quiet in the audience. Again, it's distracting.
Concession stand and the ball field, some more work on that. That was also taken. The, the civic center goals, they've, they've been, it's, it's completed. That money could be moved. And also the Miracle Park has been completed now. There was another fund at the Miracle Park cannot be used because it's donations. It has to be used at the Miracle Park. So yeah, some of this money could, could be used. It could be put in next year's budget as it was suggested or whatever.
Is there, is there, I'm sorry, Jimmy, were you about to say something? Go ahead.
Now, my thing is, we've been talking about this Cliff View Park for five, six years. We went out and got signature, we done everything. I was very patient because we wanted to, I wanted to submit it in the bond fund, but it was folded down, remember, Mayor? So then we waited for the grant. I've been very patient, I've waited. But my constituents in the fifth district have waited long enough. We have enough money. I talked to Ms. Rachel today and we came up with about three hundred and nine thousand, more, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. We can do something at Cliff View now, today. And I met with, excuse me. I met with Mr. Brown out there today. You know, the playground equipment can be moved, that block building could be torn down and get ready, get a pad ready when we do decide to build a building or whenever we do get the money to do the building. But we need to do something to let the people know that we are in good intention to do something. Now, we've been talking about this for a long time. We didn't get the grant, okay? We didn't, couldn't float it in the barn, which to me was the ideal thing to do. We couldn't do it. But we got some extra money here, about three hundred and ten thousand dollars, that we can do something to Cliff View today, this week, not next year, but now. And then we take Thompson Park and, and apply it when we do our, um, we can, we can put it on a, a list when we do the budget.
I, I, I'm gonna respond to that. I mean, I think the problem is, what do you want there? I mean, David and I kinda, Mr. Brown and I kinda received the direction that the building was that priority and so we've been going down that road. He had put the playground in the budget, which is what this money was, really on his own because the equipment needed replacing, not because there had been a request of the community. So we're trying to balance, like, what are the right things to do here? And the plan, the grant that we had applied for, there was a huge comprehensive plan that would be more than I think we could do as a city. And so that was the, that was while we were trying to apply for that. If we can figure out what we want, and Mr. Brown, where are you with the plans? I know that we've talked about it a couple of times.
Let me insert something here right there on that train of thought. I drew up a plan myself and all I was asking for was a building, just a building, sixty by eight. That's all. A building, right, Ms. Brown? Okay, so why do we have to have so many studies and different things just to build a building? That's all they've been asking for, for, for the last five, six years, a building, a clubhouse.
We do not have to, but do you understand, we were going down that road. He's, he, I mean.
I know, but, but all we're doing is talking.
Are the plans being drawn?
No.
Okay.
No. We're still working on the floor plans that I told John D. today. We gotta get the floor plans and, and also you gotta get, is it gonna be brick? Is it gonna be block? Is it gonna be two-story, one-story?
Well, and, and we've been.
Pin roof.
Back and forth about the bathrooms, you know, the outside access, the inside access and how, you know, whomever thought it worked best.
This, this building would include out, outside bathrooms and inside bathrooms.
We've spoken of is, but I'm just.
Right now, the bathrooms are inside the building and you'd have to leave the building open. I know when the kickball league and the little soccer leagues coming, they're gonna have a key to the building so when they're having their games or practices, the building will be open for them to use, to use the bathroom or whatever.
What I would suggest doing right now at this point is, what other projects are you saying that you could complete this year? Because I thought that the, that these were dollars that weren't going to be used this year and could just roll into, you know, that you could rebudget for next year.
Well, the only reason we hadn't done anything at the playground, for the playground is we was waiting on the grant, which got turned down. And then, and then you think that the recovery money could be used for that, so I've been waiting on that. But we could order the playground immediately to, tomorrow.
And start tearing down that block building.
How long does it take and when do you pay for it?
I'm sorry?
How long does the playground take and when do you pay for it?
I would say in a couple of months, they, you know, they'll, they'll come. Now, the playground people I talked to today, they're, they're recommending for a playground that's not controlled to have the rubber mulch instead of the solid thing because of kids coming from everywhere with spikes, shoes on everything. So it would be a, it would be a rubber mulch playground, which is federal law says you can do that. You can't have the old bark and chips and gravel and sand anymore. You gotta have a, an engineered product to, for the fall zones and stuff.
Ms. Ms. Brown, could your, could your department tear that block building down and clean that up?
Yeah, the, the cost of that would be the disposal of it.
So.
Could we not start that though?
No, we haven't done anything.
No, I said, could we not, I mean, could we not do that part of it?
It's still being utilized though. I mean, it's.
Mayor.
It's not being utilized.
Councilman Overton.
Can I make a suggestion that we just leave this money alone and we take this hundred and sixty thousand out of general fund? And then John D. and, and Mayor and you and David can talk about this seventy-five thousand dollars. Can we not just take this hundred and sixty out of general fund and move on?
I would, I would, I would subtract the fifty-four, six, sixty, seven, fifty-six, 'cause you're not gonna use that, correct, Mr. Brown?
Correct.
Make that a formal, make that a form of amendment.
I think he said that the basketball goals were already.
And we take the fifty-something thousand dollars out that he's not gonna use and we get the rest of it out of general fund and leave the rest of it alone.
I think that's the best path forward at this time.
That's my amendment.
Because, I mean, this is, you know, this isn't.
And you still got seventy-five thousand dollars in there to, to spend at Clearview and whatever else, so.
And that, yeah, and what, what has to happen at Clearview is way beyond seventy-five thousand dollars. So that seventy-five thousand dollars.
But we can start. We can do something. We can move those playground equipment like I talked to Ms. Brown about today. We can tear the block building down to get the pad ready for the building whenever we get the money. That's, we got money here, about three hundred and ten thousand dollars that we can do something.
Well, I, I was at the building in the spring and they were utilizing it, so I didn't realize that we're utilizing it now, apologize.
It's not usable.
It's horrible. I agree with, I absolutely agree with you. I wouldn't want to spend time in it.
This is my opinion.
Let them do it.
What we need to do is authorize Mr. Brown to start moving that playground equipment back, tear down the block building to get the pad ready for the building. And if I need to draw out another plan, I'll draw out another plan. But I have already drew out a plan according to what the people in that district wanted, the building and everything. I've already done that.
But, but it, it's not a plan to specify.
Well, I'm not engineer, but I ought to get the idea about what to do.
That, and we have that, that's what he has. And that's why I ask for the plans drawn, because they do have to be engineered so that they can be built.
But when, when are we gonna start doing it? That, that, that's what these people are asking, when? When? When?
Well, if we, if we do what Councilman Overton suggested and then we get together.
Oh, whoa, y'all, let's maintain control here. Ms. Brown.
I just made an amendment to the motion that we leave everything alone, we take this out of general fund except for the fifty-five thousand. Everything else stays in just like it is and we take this money out of general fund and then the money's still there to do with Clearview and things that we need to do.
That's a pretty smart thing to do, so I second that.
I would second that except for also the fifteen thousand for the basketball goals, which had already, which he could.
You said the basketball goals have already been done, David?
Yes, so we, we, we could subtract those two items, take the rest of it out of general fund, leave the rest of the money alone and let's, let's move on.
There's some money, there's some money left in the civic center budget, is it not, that we hadn't used?
That was, that was the basketball goals.
Mr. Brown, when could you start destroying the existing building?
Pretty quick. I mean, it'd take a little time to get the utilities unhooked or whatever.
I'd say we start with the playground, take the building down, just like Mr. Alexander said, move forward.
Now, the playground will take a little while, but I mean, that's no problem.
I'm talking about ordering it.
Yeah, we can get it ordered and get it started.
And some of the equipment, as I told Mr. Alexander today, it's been there, some of that, it's old, it's been there twenty-five, thirty years. We won't be able to move it. And, and we personally, our department will not be able to do that. It has to be done by a company, 'cause our insurance company won't let us do the playground anymore.
But we can tear that building down though.
Be done by a professional.
We can tear that building down.
Process.
We can tear the building down pretty quick. I just, you know, uh, now there'll be ninety, y'all keep saying seventy-five, it'll really be ninety. Because we did, I, I did ask for fifteen thousand to be kept out for the, for the plans of the building. So it'll be ninety thousand left at Clearview.
David.
To do the, do the playground, tear the building down and, and the plans.
David, I asked you about a month ago about tearing the fence down between Shalom Zone and the playground. Can we tear that down too?
I think that's a Shalom Zone.
Have to be approved from.
By Shalom Zone Board.
I think they're working on that.
Yeah, that's theirs, not ours.
And I told them, we, we didn't, we couldn't use the Gavin Ice fence and that, you know, once you take it down, it just rolls. But I knew somebody that probably would take it down to get it out of their way. Yeah, and we had talked about that too. Uh, the field that's between the parking lot now and our property of getting that ready for an activity of soccer, football, whatever. Uh, if they would agree to let us have that field. Of course, we're also looking at, or was wanting a partnership with them, with the gym, 'cause it has a stage and a lot of that stuff could be used for the community too. And so that, that could be a big value to us.
Paige, can you, can you touch off on any of the things that are trying to happen at the Shalom Zone right now?
I'm not on the board and I don't.
I will tell you, there's a change.
Yeah.
I will tell you, there's a change.
I know there is, I've heard it.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm very excited about the forward momentum and I think there's gonna be some good opportunities for cooperation between the two. So the number that you're proposing, oh, I just did the math and.
Understanding the, the other hundred and sixty thousand dollars that was taken from Thompson Park out of the budget included, there'll be no skate park equipment for this year. And there'll be no, not much more innovation on those concessions or whatever, where they gonna start those leagues or whatever. But the lights are very, very important.
What, when was that taken from the Thompson Park?
A hundred and sixty thousand, uh. Uh, the, the, the lights are, are two hundred and ninety. This right here, I think, totals up to a hundred and sixty.
Uh, because you already have the Thompson Park.
Is already in a Thompson Park improvement, so.
So that's ninety, uh, Ms. Nichols, I can't see her, but I bet she did the math here. Is that ninety thousand, ninety-two, forty-four? Blaining, okay. So that, that takes ninety thousand, ninety-two, forty-four from the general fund, using those funds from the Miracle Park and the Civic Center basketball goals and leaving the other untouched.
That's right. That's my amendment.
We got a first and a second.
Motion, a second, I'm ready to vote on the amendment. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Back to the regular, the original motion, which is the first reading on ordinance oh-two-two-oh-three-dash-eleven.
And Mayor, just a clarification for the audience, we're leaving all the money in place for, that's in there for the Shalom, for the, for the Clearview Park. It's all in place.
Are we also echoing that Mr. Brown can get started on Cliff View Park as far as tearing the building down and contacting someone about the new equipment when we move it? So we do all the much, we can start that and get the platform ready for the building.
Stay on him.
Yes, I would like to vote on that, on tearing the building down, 'cause that's, that's a pretty important thing.
Need to put it on, I think we'll have to put it on committee, I think we can talk about it tonight. Work session.
We have to take beds and tear the building down for something we can't do.
Yeah, I, I don't really know why we're voting on that, if that's in his budget. We don't typically have to bring everything.
Right.
Tearing down the building's not in the budget.
But I thought you were gonna use this money, that's what it was being utilized for.
I hate to go down there and tear a, a building down and then the council say, why'd you tear that building down? Like, we've got a playground at, at Triple Cricket we gotta take down. I'd like to, for the council to at least say, that's okay to do.
Okay, well then put it on next week's work session.
Let's put that on committee meeting next week.
All right, so back to the original motion. Anything further? Okay, first reading on ordinance 02203-11. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It passes unanimously. Item number six is resolution R2203-26, Councilman Hayes.
Is this a resolution supporting a conceptual site plan for Nat Caldwell Park? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion on this? I see none. This is resolution R2203-26. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda. It brings us now to other business. I'd ask if any member of this council has any other business to bring forward?
Yes, I would just, I'd just like to thank all my constituents who came up tonight and express your feeling about this Clearview Park. But I have been trying and trying for years to get something done over there. So your voice is very important, very important. Thank you so much for coming up here and we just, we gotta stay on it. Because we've been talking about it a long time, so thank you all so much. Thank you.
Mayor, I got one thing.
Yes, sir.
Can you give us an update where we are on the pace study? I, I know when we tried to do it last year, I thought we was gonna get it back in maybe February or March.
No, it's supposed to come back to us in March and, um.
Are we still on target for that?
Yeah, Ms. Flood touched base with them last week, or within the last couple of days. And it wasn't as complete as she thought it should be for us to begin looking at it. I think, you know, my goal is to have it where we can actually get it into New Year's budget, but, you know, we've got a lot of work to do before we get there, even after they bring us back our results. But yeah, they're supposed to have that information to us this month. Anyone else with other business? Okay.
Thank you to Chuck Stewart for bringing us there, Marty.
Absolutely, Mr. Stewart. Happy, happy Fat Tuesday. Okay, so from other business, we will move to public recognition on non-agenda related items. This is the time of the meeting, like the time at the beginning of the meeting, where you can speak to items that aren't on this evening's agenda. So you can speak to something that was not on the agenda if you so desire. Again, we ask you to introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Okay. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Jim Moynihan. I live in Patterson Farms subdivision at 1045 Westgate. I know this wasn't on your agenda, and what I'm coming here for is to make you aware of what's going on out there and, and I'm hoping that you guys will help us to find the right person or persons to get to, to get the answers that we require. Okay, so I've got some short remarks here about it. We're upset about the building of these two unnecessary drive-through restaurants with Westgate Drive addresses. They're not State Highway 109, they have a city street address. So I, you know, that, that is concerning me and it's a residential neighborhood. They're building these two businesses right next to houses. You know, and there's some eye-opening issues that I think we all need to take seriously. Before I speak, let me say one other thing here about this. I don't have anything against those businesses. I'm, I'm only concerned about the choice of the location, the issuance of the permits given, and the current land use and the behind-the-scenes agreements that led to this situation. We literally heard about things after it was too late to really get out in front of it. So here's, here's the things I have to say. The property was originally owned by Goodall as part of the Patterson Farms development. They quietly sold or leased it for commercial use. And they could, there was, it was zoned that way where it could be residential or commercial. But it's, it's unclear now who owns the land because, you know, it, it may have been leased, in which case they're tenants, and Goodall owns the land, or if it was sold, somebody else does. None of us knew what was happening. Consequently, we were denied the opportunity to voice our opinions and concerns before they got as far as they got. And they're, they've been putting down the foundations now. There should have been an advertised public hearing of some kind for interested and/or affected parties to comment. A widely-held practice, everywhere I've ever been is to erect a visible sign, notice on the parcel announcing the intent and how to comment. It's been very difficult to find the information, if, you know, if you haven't been born and raised here. Why, you know, there even could have been letters sent out just to the residents here, delivered to their homes and announcing the project and how to learn more about it and voice any concerns. But there was nothing to alert, alert us about the sweetheart deal that was going on. So the businesses, the new businesses will have those Westgate addresses, as I said. And as it stands now, the real problem here, again, is not those businesses, it's, it's the planning that went into this. All the traffic will enter and leave via our residential street right in front of houses. If you want to know what this will look like for us, and you know how big or how little those streets are, take a look at the lines at the Chick-fil-A or the new Dutch Brothers Coffee out by the Lowe's, or many other similar types of places where people drive through, even maybe at a Whataburger. But the cars will be lined up on the property and on our residential streets. This will create major traffic issues, but more importantly, it presents a dangerous situation for the Patterson Farm residents. And that's where this concern comes from my heart, especially for our children. I don't have any there, thank God. Mine are grown and living somewhere else in grandchildren. But there are a lot of kids in the neighborhood and they are prone to run out into the street. And, and, you know, right now, it's a typical residential street, and it won't be with all that traffic. And so, you know, I'm worried about them. They play in front of their homes, as children do, and they're certainly a very serious concern for their safety. And we all need to take this to heart. Now, the patrons of these two businesses will come primarily from 109. They're driving through and, and not necessarily our residents. Who are those patrons, right? They're, they're not from the neighborhood. But here's a little, the idea of what I think we can expect. Not only can we have major traffic issues, we will see litter from the drive-through patrons on our streets. Heck, when I go to the Kroger, I was seeing those masks we've been wearing for the last two years, you know, all over the parking lots. So why are they going to stop at a burger restaurant? But they'll be on the streets, they'll be on the sidewalks, they may be on the lawns. We can expect the probability of rodents, which are attracted to the dumpsters filled with the food scraps. We can count on the increased possibility of these rodents coming in contact with the children playing on the street right in front of us. And, and also, you know, if there's not, nothing in the dumpster, they may venture down the street and get into the houses, these little guys. But, you know, and also, I forgot to mention the possibility of when you have the restaurants and they have drive-throughs and they're late night hours and stuff.
I'm sorry, your time is up. So can you wrap up, please?
It is. Okay, well, all right. Finally, I, you know, these two establishments will definitely affect property values. The only thing I need to say here is that I have a solution that will make this more amenable to the community and still help them to get this done. I just need, we need, the community needs some help to get to the right people. And, and all we need to do is take that egress off of Westgate and put it on to Clear Lake Meadow Drive. And so.
Yes, sir.
And, and finally, last thing, you know, I, I think sometimes the blinding light of prophets obscures the people from considering the humanity that they fail to recognize behind it. So I'm hoping that we can see past that blinding light. And thank you very much. All right? Appreciate it.
Y'all, please, no applause. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rochelle Turner and I too live in the Patterson Farm community. I live at 1088 Westgate Drive. And even more so than the rodents or the property value, my concern would be safety. All of the people driving through, creating that traffic, for those houses that live right across the way, how are they going to pull out of their driveways? If a car parks on one of our streets, it is already so narrow that you can't see around it, and you have to drive into oncoming traffic to get around that parked car. And then not only to mention the parked cars or the traffic flow that the drive-throughs will cause, but what about that fire station? The entrance and exit for that fire station will likely be blocked because of these people coming in. And he made a good point, that we, we can put that entrance on the Clear Lake Street, but that will also further hinder the fire station being able to enter and exit from their firehouse. My suggestion would be to add it to the 109, similar to the Dollar General right down the way. I understand that the engineers have currently stated, um, sorry, I'm nervous. The engineers have currently stated that Westlake is the only appropriate entrance. However, that Dollar General right down the way has a very similar entrance on 109. I think that the best solution would be to have it on 109 to protect our kids, protect our cars, and protect the fire station.
Thank you. I don't know if there are a lot of people here to speak about that. I think I probably might ought to interrupt you and kind of let you know the scenario, which I don't know. Mr. McCoy, would you like to come up and address this? Because I am, I hate to put you on the spot, but this council, I mean, our exposure to this was many years ago when it was zoned. And as far as, was it done as a master development plan and it was commercially zoned at that point? And when that happens, that's when notification occurs. You don't notify residents when every business is trying to get approved. Can you, can you explain the process better for their benefit?
The, Bill McCoy, City Planner. The property's been zoned CS, Commercial Services, for a very long time, well before, of course, the Patterson Farms subdivision was developed. As a matter of fact, that property where Patterson Farms is now was originally a concept plan for Clear Lake Meadows subdivision, which they built portions on opposite sides of the Patterson Farms. So it's been zoned CS, which accommodates.
Probably since 109 was built, maybe?
Uh, probably at least that long and about that time. So it's been zoned for that use for a very long time. What happened is the Patterson Farms property, they came in and rezoned that to allow for a master planned community. But these properties were not included as part of that and they retain their CS zoning. So just like any other CS-owned property in town, they're entitled to develop the site in accordance with the zoning regulations. So in this case, the access management criteria, of course, will prohibit any driveway to and from Highway 109.
What that, what that means for you guys is there is an agreement where we have to limit access to 109 because it is a state-controlled road and we cannot do drives everywhere that we think they make the, not make the most sense. Everywhere that a business wants an access, we can't provide that, but.
And the same for Clear Lake Meadows, is the clearance from 109 has, you have to have certain driveway separation. So you couldn't have a driveway between Westgate and 109 on Clear Lake Meadows. And I will let everyone know also that the property across the street on the southeast corner of 109, and I can't remember the name of the street that extends off to the east there, but that is also zoned CS. So there are a lot of activities and, that are allowed in that CS zoning that may not be amenable to a lot of folks, but again, those properties been that, that zoning for a long time. We are not required to provide notices to area property owners, adjacent property owners, when someone is building something by right. Now, when there's a zoning change coming up, we certainly do. A variance or something like that, conditional use permit, we provide notices. But a restaurant, including a drive-through restaurant, is a permitted use in the CS zoning district.
Did the planning commission look at it or was it staff?
It was an administrative plan because they didn't ask for any exceptions. If they, if they would have asked for any exceptions from the design standards of our code, then they would have to be reviewed by the planning commission. But there still wouldn't be a public notice.
And so that'd be a reason too, why no one had any awareness, because a lot of things wind up with planning when they want something that's out of what, what's, when they want something that's not allowed by law. And what, what's happening there is apparently allowed by law and therefore it just comes to our planning department and engineering looks at it and, oops, sorry, not timing, I'm not timing you. Do you guys, I don't know if Ms. Haumacalli wants to weigh in on this, or if any of these council members want to say anything. I just, I, I, I don't want, you know, a lot of people to feel like this council has any ability to do anything related to, I mean, can you think of anything that we could do differently than what is happening? I mean, legally?
I, I don't know anything about this project. It's the first I've heard of it.
Hey, inappropriate, you all. I really can't comment because I, you know, I have no knowledge of this project at all. Sounds like it was an administrative decision, that it met everything that was set out in our zoning code and that there were no variances requested, and therefore these people have, have a right to build.
Mr. McCoy, do you have any recollection? Mr. McCoy is always ultra-prepared for everything. He probably wasn't for this tonight. But do you have any recollection on the engineering comments or any comments on ingress and egress?
Part of our process is when someone's interested in developing property or redeveloping property, that we have a pre-application meeting. So we take notes at that pre-application meeting as to the main points that we're discussing with the applicant to enlighten them or direct them to various sections of code that they need to pay close attention to, to comply with the design standards, the general zoning and other construction criteria. So they, we have those notes and part of the notes that I had seen is that because of access requirements, which is a design standard in our zoning code, that the driveway to this, two restaurants, actually, there's a Dutch Brothers and a Highway 55 diner, had to be located from, to and from Westgate across from, I can't remember the local street there that, where there's an intersection, but that was considered to be the appropriate place to comply with all the access restrictions.
Disents requirements and the like, I'm guessing.
Yeah, the separation requirements for driveways on different classified roadways.
Okay, well, I thank you for the information. Oh, y'all go ahead.
No, I asked Mr. McCoy for information about that because I've gotten a number of phone calls and messages about it. And I did drive out and I can definitely see where their issues would be. Now, is this property owned by someone or is it leased?
Well, I, I don't know who it's owned by now. Again, it, we can find that out and it's possible to find out. We, we don't make a decision on who, how the site plan is developed and so forth.
And you can't.
Not the owner.
Mayor, I've had several phone calls on this as well. And, and like I've told them, this was approved many, many years ago, many years ago, this site, this master development plan, site plan was approved back then. And, you know, where I'm upset with is that the real estate agents that sold some of this property didn't advise these folks that there's going to be some retail there. And that's where I'm upset, because they should have advised these folks that live there that there was going to be some retail on both of those corners, not just this one, but south one will be across the street. And those folks across the street are going to be the same way when that retail comes on that side. But, you know, I'm upset because the developers did not tell these folks there's going to be retail on that corner. But, you know, like I said, this was approved many, many years ago. If we could change it, I'm sure everybody on this council would change it if there's a way to do that. But, but, but I'm upset because they didn't tell them that retail was on that corner.
Mr. McCoy, thank you for your comments. I figured you could step through things better than I could, so I appreciate that. We will continue now with public comment on non-agenda related items. I'm sorry for the interruption, all.
Hi, my name's Erica Slomsky, 1704 Garden. I'm also in Patterson Farms. I actually have about a 10, 15-year experience with Dutch Brothers. Personally, I have waited in their Dixon, California grand opening for an hour for a drink. I've watched people drive over what Davis, California did, that city did, to stop traffic, watch them drive over it. You got, we will be here again, asking for your help to intervene. I urge you to go home and Google Dutch Brothers traffic and see how many cities have had to step in after they already built everything to address these issues. We're going to be here again because some of these kids are going to get hurt. Our streets are too narrow. If you have two street cars on the sides of the road, it is very difficult to drive through anywhere in that neighborhood. Like, I found out the week after I moved in that those were commercial lots. My Goodall definitely told me about the Publix and, oh, big shopping center. They didn't bother to tell us that, oh, that thing right there, that's also a retail center. We weren't told. So many people, like, so many people said they wouldn't have bought in. I'm actually almost a half a mile away, and I wouldn't have bought into this. I could tell you straight out, not a good idea. Some of these kids are really going to get hurt. I have nothing, I love Dutch Brothers. I, you know, I was super excited to see they were coming here, but that lot's not big enough for two. We need help, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council folks, I wasn't actually going to plan to speak today. I live actually right, right on the same cul-de-sac as Erica, who just spoke. I'm sorry?
Name an address.
Derek Brady, 1711 Garden Lane. As Mayor, I actually met you at the Publix opening there, right across the street. You know, again, while I can understand, you know, things were pre-planned, thing, you know, things, things were approved many, many years ago. You know, the concerns that I think I share with, with most of my neighbors is, again, you know, not only that we weren't notified, that's not you all's fault. That's Goodall's fault, and we hold that against them wholeheartedly. But with that being said, you know, when we do have the traffic issues, when we do have people that, that children get injured, when we are, we do have folks that are unable, that are 20 minutes late to work because they can't get out of their driveways. You know, when we have, you know, people running into mailboxes, damage to personal property, all things that are going to come. I mean, again, as Erica mentioned, all you got to do is Google Dutch Brothers traffic. That's all you've got to do to know how much of an issue this is going to be. I mean, just to give you an example, just in our cul-de-sac, we had, we had an accident just because someone couldn't see a car when they were backing out. One of our neighbors hit one of their, their, their other neighbor's cars just as they were backing out. So again, compile that by 20, 30, 40 times. This is going to be a huge issue, a huge issue. I, I encourage, if you haven't driven by it, it sounds like some of you probably have. I mean, there, there is going to be a parking lot six to eight feet from someone's window, where they're going to be trying to watch TV, where they're going to be trying to put their kids to bed. There's going to be, I, I can imagine, there already are drainage issues over there with the way that parking lot's going to slope towards that house. That house is going to have even further drainage issues. So again, you know, it's not you all's problem that Goodall didn't notify us. But all we're asking for is some sort of resolution to keep our streets safe, to keep our children safe. My wife is out there in the audience. We just got married. I'm not getting any younger. We're going to have kids very soon. And we anticipated this being a neighborhood where our kids could play freely. Our kids could run down the road and go to their neighbors' houses. We can't do that anymore. We can't do that anymore. It's incredibly disheartening. I mean, we can get into, you know, property value decrease, all these other things. But really, at the, at the crux of what we all want to talk about here, and I mean, I know, looking out there, there are probably 40, you heard them, 40 or 50 residents here from Patterson Farms that are concerned, that are worried, that are scared right now for what this is going to do to our neighborhood and do to our safety. So I encourage you, if there's anything we can do, anything we can do to help. I know that zoning, whatever, access roads, whatever we were talking about earlier with planning, is that more important than children's safety? I don't think it is. I really don't think it is. So I encourage each and every one of you, do what you can for us, please, please. Before someone, something serious does happen, before someone gets injured. Thank you.
John Boone, 1137 Woodvale Drive, here in Gallatin, once again. I would just like to say, Mr. Overton was asking, he said, is there anything we could do about this issue for Patterson Farms? You all are our local lawmakers, ordinance makers. So you all can, now, you can't go back. I, I understand, grandfather anything in. But I would just say, developers are going to continue to come here. They're going to continue to build neighborhoods and want to build neighborhoods. Hold them accountable. Hold them accountable. The first thing, if there is property next to the residential property that is zoned CS or commercial, that should be full disclosure. They should be made to fully disclose that to the people who are moving into residence. Hey, you know, all of this is not just residential. There's a possibility that someday somebody's going to come and put a commercial building over here, too. That should be something that they have to tell people before they move into the residences, because they don't know, otherwise. These people who are coming out here buying houses are not coming to the planning and looking at, at the maps to see what's planned for, for the city. So that should be something that the real estate developers are held accountable for. Put fines in place that if they do not, if they ever found where these people came up and they didn't know about it, and they can come and say, hey, nobody told us. Nobody gave us anything that said this was going to happen, that they're held accountable, that they have monetary penalties put in place so that they will not do it. So there are some things that you can do. Now, that wasn't what I came here for this evening. I actually came to say kudos to the city council because I drove through downtown during the month of February, and I saw posters for Black, Black History Month. I appreciated that. That was great. You go through a lot of towns, and you do not see that. And so kudos to you all for having that done. At the same time, I was a little upset because I saw the same five people over and over and over again. I said, surely there are more than five people who, you know, have been good black American citizens in the United States. I was told, I reached out, and I was told that there was a budget issue that to get multiple signs or more people involved, it would have been much more costly than to have the duplicates of those five. I understand that. But with some forethought, with some preparation, because we understand, and I'm hoping, that you'll continue to do so, that you'll continue this, because we know Black History Month comes every year in February. There are some things that we know that happen on an annual basis. So let's plan ahead. There are some that you can, can be in conjunction with other cities that may not have celebrated this year. And maybe you can go in together and, and buy multiple of, and you can, you know, to get the budget, within the budget that you need. But I would, I would just suggest, please, because you know it's coming, consider how you can do it and have a little bit better representation. I was actually a little offended. I don't know if anybody else was. But there was only one black man that was represented, as if to say that black men don't do anything for this nation. So I felt that was a little emasculating. You had all of these women and Martin Luther King Jr. So, you know, that was, that was something that, that was there. But kudos for doing it, because everyone does it, and I appreciate that. Other thing was traffic lights. A lot of the traffic lights, you know, you got traffic just standing, and there's nobody coming. And I, I don't know what that process is. I'm not an engineer with that. But I know in other cities and places that, where you have a left turn signal, they have the ability to make that a flashing yellow so that if there's no traffic, it's a stop sign instead of stop and wait until somebody comes up and triggers the turnover. So that, that's just some, some things to consider and study. The other, the food truck permit that we talked about, and that was passed. And, you know, that was done. I just want people to know from Real Works, we applied for our food truck permit. It's been a couple of weeks, and we have not been scheduled to have an inspection. So I still have people waiting for me to be able to get a permit to serve them.
Do you have anybody can follow up with you after the meeting about that specifically? I do want to give a shout out to Jeff Hinchell, whose idea, whose idea it was to do Black History banner, banners. And I want to tell you that no one in the city, well, someone in the city, but no one that works for the city who is elected to represent the city made this election on the national people that we thought, that they thought would be good on banners. What we would like to do, and actually had a teacher reach out to me last week who's interested in doing it as a high school project, is identify local black residents who have made a difference to our community. And so that would be custom banners. But you do, I mean, I do think you want to do them in some multiples because you want different people to see, have different opportunities to see them in different places. But that's kind of our big goal, hopefully, next year. So, yes, ma'am?
My name is Carolyn Weston. I live at 1123 Westgate Drive. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did one of you on the committee say that you guys are not who we really need to be talking to about this? Or did I hear that wrong?
I think what is being, was being said is that this was done a long time ago, and there's no way that we could interfere with what the plan is. Now, I have not seen the plans. I don't know if any of you all have seen the plans. You certainly can. And, you know, that, that's certainly an opportunity.
Well, my main concern was if you can't help us, can you put us in touch with someone who can? And being as I am a homeowner, we bought our property about two years ago. And Patterson Farms at our closing made sure that we know everything that they expected us to do as homeowners. But they failed to disclose to us what they were going to do with that corner and how it was going to be used. And me and mine wouldn't have bought there had I known that. I had just left one bad neighborhood because of the same thing. And my, when we moved there to Stratford Park, I mean, to Westgate Drive, I hoped that that would be the last move that I would have to make, except to the funeral home. I'm 80 years old.
Oh, you look awesome.
Well, thank you. I'm, I feel great, and I praise the Lord for my health. But anyway, why can they get by with all these people that are in that subdivision? And I'm going to bet you, you could line them up right here today, and that nobody would tell you if they disclosed what was going on to that corner. Now, I find that to be very, very confusing to me and withholding information that we should have known. And this is not the only thing that Goodall Homes has done. They built the subdivision, the streets that go across...
We probably should stay away from attacking individuals or...
Well, I'm just saying...
I understand, I understand.
That's who I dealt with.
I understand.
And if I can't say who I bought my home from...
That's fine.
I talked to someone that works for Goodall Homes, and they are the ones that are responsible for selling the property, this guy. And I said, could you tell me, were you aware of who owned this corner and what they were going to do with it? And he said, ma'am, I really didn't know. He said, I said, I find that really hard to believe. And he said, but I don't appreciate you calling me a liar. And I said, well, I don't think I said that. I think I said, I found it hard to believe.
Well, I think it was probably true, again, this public comment. But I think it was probably true that he didn't know exactly what was going to happen there.
He sold the property?
But certainly, the commercial zoning is what he knew. But he might not have known what specific properties or businesses were going there. So I...
Well, I do think that that should have been told to us when we bought our property.
Right. I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you.
What I was going to say about the houses across the road, they didn't even know, Goodall Homes didn't even know that there had to be a certain amount of opening behind houses over there for the water to come down. So what, they built the whole subdivision, and then they come back in there and tell all these people, we're going to have to take part of your backyard. And that's what they did. They took part of everybody's backyard.
Very sorry that you...
I'm mad as hell. I just want you to know that.
I can understand that.
And I don't think...
Thank you.
And if you can help us, please, I just, I just implore you to...
Well, I, I'm going to certainly speak with our planner and our engineer. Hey, 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 y'all. Y'all, let's keep this order, please. It's our order, please. I can't, we can't conduct business when there's interruptions. The, I will certainly talk to our engineer and to our planner and see if they could imagine any other alternative scenarios. But I hate to say it, but I think at the end of the day, you're probably looking at a civil issue. And I don't know if Ms. Haumacalli would agree with... She can't give a comment. As our attorney, she can't give advice. But I'm afraid that's the direction that this is heading, but...
So we're just kind of out of luck, huh?
We, we cannot go and change somebody's zoning once they already have it.
That's not my, that's not my point.
You're talking about the traffic and the access and that kind of thing.
I know. I'm talking about the disclosure.
Well, the disclosure, that's where I'm saying that is probably not the government oversight. That is not something that we can...
Well, who can?
I mean, they should make, I guess they should do it, but I guess they look at it. I, I don't know how it happens, because I've not had this issue.
Okay.
But I know it's public record, and so...
You know, I know that our homes are not real expensive, but they're all we've got. And so I would appreciate it if you could send us in the right direction so that we can know that they just hoodwinked us, and that's America today, and, you know...
I would suggest that you all contact, you know, the person who built the homes and, and sold the property for, or, or did whatever they did with the property.
Well, I did, and he's the one that told me he didn't know who owned the property there on the corner. So he's an idiot.
My name is, everybody else said it, so I'm going to say pastor, Andrew Bolton. I'm as mad as she is. I just can't say it the way she did. I live at 1311 Coach Lane. Ms. George, thank you for your phone call the other day and the advice. We're here seeking your help. You know, I know you're saying there's things that can't be done, things that have been in place for a long time. Those things were in place before we lived there. We weren't a factor at the time that those things were decided, but now we do live there. I was the first resident to live in this neighborhood. I've, I've seen this neighborhood grow. My wife and our three kids were the very first people to live here. We love Gallatin. We consider this place home. We consider this neighborhood home. What I love is that it feels like the old days, where my kids play outside in the street, and they ride their bikes, and they walk to the pool, and they have friends, and they're not on stinking tablets all the time because it is a safe place where they can go outside. And my fear is that that's about to be gone. That is about to be gone, and my kids can no longer safely walk out of our front door because there's going to be loads of commercial traffic in our residential neighborhood. When they, the oldest planning map I could find was from 2016. The Tennessean posted an article about Goodall Homes, I mean, unsaid developer, building this neighborhood. And in that planning map, it said the right of way was on Clear Lake Meadows. There's a line clearly right of way from Clear Lake Meadows to this CS lot. So I'm wondering, what has changed since 2016? Why all of a sudden does it have to be on Westgate in our residential, residential area? I have three little kids that are in danger now. And as much as I love this city, Mayor Brown, I've, I've been able to work with you on several things through the church, which has been a blast. I, I've worked at the park, and I love that place. I, I love this city, but I'm sitting in this seat, and I have city employees shaking their head and scoffing when we're making comments about our concerns. And I'm trying to figure out, where is my, where is my confidence that you people who represent us are going to do anything for us? I hear about a park that y'all have been wanting, just, just a place for kids to play for years. And I have zero confidence right now in the city that I love is going to do anything for us. I'm getting no answers from, from anybody here.
Well, I, I, I don't, our engineer is not here tonight. I certainly cannot advise you legally. I'm trying to tell you what we know that we know, or what we don't know that we don't know. But I, I'm afraid that your gripe is going to be with your, the property developer.
May I ask you another question? Okay, so if this is coming, which it sounds like it is, if the entrance is, if the commercial entrance to two high-traffic commercial properties are going to be on our tiny residential streets, what is the city going to do to protect my kids? What are you going to do to keep my kids safe?
Well, I think that engineering certainly can work with the, the traffic calming concerns, and they have, they have a process through which to do that. I wish Nick Tuttle were here tonight, but he's not. I don't know if Mr. Wagner, if you'd feel like you had information that you could communicate to him afterwards.
He's been shaking his head, so I'm not sure what he's, I mean...
Honestly, I do not have any answers for you. I have not even seen the plan.
I understand, I understand. This is new information.
Yeah.
We're coming to you for help.
Right.
And with this new information, there's now a responsibility to do something with it.
Well, and I'm trying to manage expectations because...
I understand.
You know, we don't get to be king and queen. We, you know, we have to work within the parameters of, that we are charged with, so...
Yes, okay. Thank you for your time.
My name is Richard Brown. I'm at 1027 Westgate Drive in Patterson Farms. So I'm directly across the street from this, that's getting built. I tried to start the process a little earlier when they were just digging up the dirt. I was like, maybe we can get in there, you know, if, even if the city can just pay them out, and then we'll find a way as taxpayers, pay y'all back, you know, stop it. I, I think that's the easy way. So I started looking at the zoning. What I saw was MRO, which is designated for residential or commercial. But he also said that it's commercial only, so... So, okay, how come we can't discuss in putting something like a weight gym or something, something that the parents can go to or the kids, you know, some type of center? Like I said, buy them out, tell them to go somewhere else. Because again, like David explained, it's too narrow. If any of my kids get hurt, y'all will see me. And I've never been to a meeting like this before. I'm from Mississippi, Pores Park, all right? I'm still in the South, but I love Gallatin. You know, I came from, I started in Madison and moved on. And I'm a person, you know, when you look at my black people, as they say, you know, we're known for drugs and, you know, causing violence. Well, I'm not that type of person. I'm the nicest you're gonna find. I work at Vanderbilt. I'm a respiratory therapist. I'm here to help. You know, but at the same time, when it comes to my family, my money, I don't play with that. And if we can find a solution, I'm here to help. I'll get on the street. I'll go talk to the engineer, whoever I gotta talk to. But my voice will get heard. I know how it's gonna get heard because I know the plans have been set. But again, I live directly across the street. I already know it's gonna impact me. Okay? Anybody, can anybody give me some insight as far as what's in your mind? Because like I said, I see a lot of heads rolling. You know, I see a lot of minds thinking. And we just, we as residents, we just don't want to be the ones up here just talking. You know, I know y'all have seen something. And if y'all could give us some insight of saying, okay, all right, we'll get on the phone and we'll call this certain number, which my number is 615-710-9080, and you can give me a dot-read person to talk to and I will go with my residents here and we will figure out some type of solution. But like I said, I've worked hard. I'm 33 years old. I could be doing all these other crazy things, but I want to live and I want to create a wealth for my kids. You know, I've learned everything that I can in books and learned online. But to do that and then you still fail, doesn't make sense. So again, you got my number, you got my name, you got my address. If somebody could just give out a solution, I would sure appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fennell, Mr. Fennell, can you take over the meeting for a moment? I've got a bit of an emergency.
Don't leave now. It's just getting interesting.
So sorry. I'll be right back.
Yes, sir. Name and address.
My name's Tommy Harrison. I live at 1127 Westgate in Patterson Farms. I've heard numbers of these people talking about safety issues. I think if y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, parking on the street is illegal. I will come in. Parking on the city street is illegal.
Bill Soars. Officer Soars. Yes, we do have an ordinance.
Okay, I'll go on. This morning, safety is my big issue. This morning, when I was leaving my house, I got up to where they're building this establishment. And there's four or five vehicles sitting on the side of the road. There's two dump trucks sitting there. One of them's sitting crossways of Westgate, waiting to dump a load of rock or whatever he's doing. But he's just sitting there. Suppose I'm in an ambulance with a stroke or there's a fire truck needs to get in there. I had to sit there and wait for at least five minutes for this dump truck to get out of the way. And here's this other dump truck. They're parking on the street illegal. Get them off the street.
Did you call the police, sir?
No, I didn't. I wanted to try to be a neighbor with anybody.
I understand.
We've been here for two years. We bought our place about two years ago. Nay person at Good Old Homes mentioned to us, my wife and I, that it was on commercial. Not the first one. We looked at probably 10 or 12 different lots before we decided over four, five, six visits. Nobody ever mentioned commercial. Somebody needs to pay for it.
Thank you, sir. Next.
I'm Pharaoh. I live at 1127 Westgate with Tommy. Just to tell you how small and narrow those streets are, we had an incident not too long ago. Our neighbors were parking on the street at night. They have too many vehicles to get in their driveway. We have enough space in our driveway for two vehicles. If you have a guest or something, they have to park on the street. We've been told there's an ordinance against parking on the street, especially in a small neighborhood like that. We had called an ambulance for him one night. They could not get to our driveway. They could not back into our driveway. It wasn't our vehicles that were blocking them. It was other people parked on the street. So with the fire department and EMT, EMS, whatever they are, at the end of Clear Lake and Nichols Lane, if they have to get into our neighborhood, it's gonna be impossible. I don't know where the overflow of people trying to go through the drive-through for the coffee shop or for the restaurant, whatever it is, hamburger joint. We don't object to any businesses. But with all the property across the street where Publix was put in and things of that nature, why couldn't they have chosen a better place for it with that kind of traffic? If it'd been a salon or something where there, you know, wasn't constant coming and going and the people were going by appointments or something like that, it'd been a whole different story. But when you put our lives and our children that play on that street, we have to drive very carefully because the kids are so used to being at home and riding their bikes and chasing a ball across the street. Somebody's gonna get hurt. And not only that, there may be somebody's life at stake waiting for an ambulance to get to them. So we're just crying out for help. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Burgette O'Quindo. I live across the street from Patterson Farms at 1018 Tucker Place. I moved here about a year and a half ago to be closer to my best friend, who lives in Patterson Farms. I personally am kind of excited at the thought of having a fun coffee shop and a nice little hamburger joint so that I can run across the street to go and grab something. I think everyone here is objecting and very, very concerned about the entrance. I am extremely disappointed in showing up tonight in front of you all as the mayor, the vice mayor, and all of you councilmen and women. And you're saying basically, oh, too bad, so sad, nothing we can do. There are many people in this room that have moved here from different states where there have been main roads with many, 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 many restaurants and businesses coming off of main roads. I understand that 109 may be a state-controlled road, but there are numerous businesses coming on and off of 109, coming in very different directions. If we, the residents of Gallatin, cannot come to you all for assistance and going to bat and combating for us for safety, for our children, and for our neighborhoods, what's the point of even having you in place? I don't mean that with any disrespect, but I mean, we're coming to you for help, for our children. Why in the world can there be a commercial business that's going to have private residential access on and off as the only entrances to this business? I think that the main concern that everyone here can agree upon is the fact that we want safe access for our children, for our families, and for our friends. The distance across the street or the businesses potentially gonna be going in across the street, I'm assuming are gonna encounter the same issues as you guys have shared. And I'm not opposed to businesses being there. I think it's great. I look at other communities in Tennessee. I've lived here since 2005. I love it. I love the growth of having these communities where you can go and have your local coffee shop and you can have your local hamburger joint. But we need to make sure that we're still being mindful of not just completely destroying the residences of the people that are going to be the patrons in supporting these restaurants and these businesses. And you all have been put in these positions of power by the people in the residents of Gallatin to help us. And that's what we're asking for. David goes against Goliath. We're the David. You guys are with us. We need you to be with us to help battle and figure out what the next steps need to do. Even if you can't do it, we put you here because we believed that you could help us get to the next step in any project that we come together with. And I understand that not everybody's gonna always be completely in agreeance on every aspect of this, but to automatically have your mind shut down to, well, too bad, so sad, there's no possibility, that's not true because how long has 109 been there? There are tons and tons of other businesses coming on and off. Change needs to happen and we can be that change, but we need to move forward in a positive, community-driven way to make people understand that while yes, this does need to happen and it did happen and nobody's, we can't question and go back and change the laws that put this place here, but we can question and try to change and try to control the access to and from said business. That's all.
Okay, next. Come ahead. Oh, you've already spoken. I'm sorry. If you've already spoken, we need to go to the next person. I apologize. Okay, this is a public comment period and I think, again, I'm trying to manage expectations. There are a lot of answers we don't have. We don't have closed minds. We just don't have answers. This wasn't something that was on the agenda. This is not something we've been exposed to, so I'm very sorry.
I did say there was an ordinance out there for that, sir. I said there was an ordinance in place for that.
Temporarily, you can park on the street, but you can't overnight that.
I missed that. I'm sorry I missed that. Yes.
I'm Bob Stansfield. I live at 1310 Coats Lane in Patterson Farms. First of all, I'd like to say that I do appreciate each and every one of you and the role that you play in this community. You know, when I wake up every day in the morning, I get my coffee and I open my front door and I see Andrew Bolton and his wife and his three little kids across the street. It's a pretty neat sight to see a young family growing in the city of Gallatin today. I wonder if you all, you all have neighbors across the street where you all live as well? Picture getting up in the morning and having your cup of coffee and looking out your front door and seeing a Highway 55 restaurant, seeing a Dutch Brothers, seeing cars lined up in front of your driveway, ready to get their morning cup of coffee. How do you guys, I'm curious what you all would do in that situation? Right? I know you guys have heard it all tonight and I appreciate the ears. I just, I'm concerned because it sounds like we don't have a solution and that all we're hearing is the problem. I think we've got folks at Patterson Farms that are more than willing to help with that solution. We just need some direction. We're looking to you for some direction. I hear you say, well, we just don't have the answers. It's new. Trust me, you're not finished hearing this. We're gonna continue to come until we see some kind of change. And whatever that may be, we look to you all for help. We look to you all to lead. And I challenge each and every one of you to do that. Thank you.
Ask Al Javon, 1335 Longwood Park. I had a long day, but I was in the car listening to what was happening and I had a lot of things tonight, so I just drove by. I think you probably realized tonight that your citizens are angry. And they're angry because they start to realize what's really happening. You know, I heard a few minutes ago one of you saying that that was approved many years ago. You approved it. Except few of you, you were not on the council. The majority of you spent a long, long time here. So you approved it. And we come again to the same problem every time. Safety. You approve development after development without running or just driving by and see what can happen. You know, you say that development was approved years ago, but you just approved Chandler Marketplace, which is basically commercial, one entry on a small road leading to apartment buildings. It's exactly the same print. So there is solution. We've been coming here for years now and the stuff who always hit me when I come here and I see something arriving there is traffic study. Traffic study are done after basically everything come to you and being approved. Why don't traffic study are run by the city and not by the developer, done before the plan comes to you, get charged to the developer, and at least get something we can work on? Safety issue. And, you know, you're a great politician now. I learned to know you all for all these years now. And I think we should have elections every six months. If we had elections every six months, maybe something will be done a lot more faster. Again, I heard, you know, we can do things fast in that government, but if I remember well, when somebody came complain about noise, the government take action and put all the city there to ban, not ban, but restrict at the point that almost nobody can do it now, Airbnb. Maybe you need to run for mayor to be able to get the staff going that fast. And, you know, I've seen things the last few councils where I saw condescending comments. I saw a citizen being attacked on his business as questioned. You don't have the right to ask. Ask him about his price, about his margin because he came and had real comment. I see one of you verbally attacking a purple art recipient because he said something about the police and the fire and told you you didn't care. Okay? And I kind of agree with him. When we talk about police and fire and see how much money these guys make and nothing is done, why? Study was done in 2019, April 2019. And this study, it says that our police and firefighters don't make enough money. Was something done now? Did you raise? Yeah, you raised this year, three years later.
The police actually happened last year. The fire did not because it showed that we were middle of the market. So we did not do the fire. This year.
So we're doing another study.
This year, we have done a temporary increase.
Yes, ma'am. I know that because I've been in this, sitting there in the audience every Tuesday. And I make sure I don't work on Tuesday so I can come here. I was in Portland this morning, so I made sure I came for that. Yeah, a study is gonna be made again and something got done as an emergency measure because the city was losing officers, going away. How many officer we lose this year on the police force? A lot. So I think you guys need to remember that you work for us. So I think you guys need to remember that you work for us. Oh, I have the same one.
Thank you, Mr. Javons. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on non-agenda-related items? Mr. Brinkley. Okay, his intention is good.
Charles Brinkley, 155 Apple Drive, here in Gallatin. You know what? I'll be remiss if I didn't say what I intend to say because you councilpeople need this. I simply say you earned your pay tonight. Again, I know that. But I'm gonna give you, I want to give you a compliment. I'm up here for the purpose to shout out a big thank you for the job you've done, especially for me, the request I had several weeks ago requesting the naming of a street in honor of renaming the street in honor of our pastor, David Jackson, who is here right now. And, uh, but I just want to thank you, Turtle, the city engineer and the priest, planner, and, and, you know, Councilman Alexander, you all helped me a great deal to get something, a resolution accomplished. And I did not get one objection from you councilmembers. And I just want to say thank you. It went as far, the mayor did an excellent job. She came to the church Sunday to do a proclamation in the naming of the street, which was excellent. We did a ribbon cutting. We took pictures. We was even on Channel 5 news. And this little request that was made became a big deal. And Pastor Jackson is here tonight, but he don't know I was going to say this. But I want you all to meet him. And this is a gentleman, the preacher, the pastor, the teacher, the entrepreneur, the, the icon of Gallatin. Hey, uh, uh, Mr. Boone, we might have his picture up there next year on Black History. But I, I'll tell you, he, he, he's a good man. He well deserved it. And I wanted to do that. We had some members from First Baptist Winchester here who, who gone now. And, and I wanted them to know that I was going to make that remark on their behalf. And I appreciate all the things that you all have done. And you know what? Goma Power was right when he said the innocentment of thank you, thank you, thank you. So I appreciate the time. My time is up. You all have a pleasant, good evening.
Just realized, Mr. Brinkley, you got no objection because it was well deserved. But, but good thought on your part. Pastor Jackson, I didn't see you here. Congratulations again in case you didn't understand, didn't know there's a street over by First Baptist Winchester that has now been renamed Doctor Derek Jackson Way. So congratulations to him. And the coolest thing was we surprised him. So that was awesome. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition on non-agenda-related items?
Good evening. My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at 10007 Hart Street. I'm gonna make a short sweep of the points so we can go listen to the priest. We have a situation by which we need to have the building with the restroom at Clearview Park opened by a staff member to maintain that facility to make sure that somebody can go in and pee. That's ridiculous. There's nobody over there. We need to have somebody on staff that does that. And then what we need to do next thing is find out if there's any things that can be done over there as far as people in the community can utilize that facility as it stands. You do not want to tear that building down because guess what? Where are you going to pee? Simple. Until you, until you come up with another building over there, you need to use what you have. And then we go to the next step. The next step is being able to put programming in there or whatever you want to do using what you have so far. And then we build the building. You don't tear the building down because guess what? You have nothing to work with, period. No pee pot, nothing. So with that being said, that's why I say this. Now, I pick, I'm gonna pick on Mr. Brown. He's my lovely buddy, but he needs to get somebody over there to take care of that tomorrow and that'll be the start of Lenten season, 40 days. And during that time, we can see how much people want to use the facility, period, and have a place over there for the kids to go in inside and somebody to supervise the building. We don't need to be handing keys out to ball teams and stuff because we need somebody to stand at the place and take care of our facility, period. Now, there's where your budget's going to come in because you're going to have to pay somebody. So now that's the deal. And the reason why I say that is this, I have been working out the community to widen the streets over there and make it to where the kids can walk from people's homes on the street to the ballpark. Okay? We cannot get anybody to sign up to let us go into that community because they think we're going to take their property or something like that when we already have the right-of-way lined up. That is a fact. In other words, if you want a scout troop over there, if you want something like that, you need to plan ahead for it. And I'll tell you this, I am an old scout master. And you want to, you want to have a good program? Get a scouting program. I'd be happy to work with you on that, absolutely. So now, the monkey is not on the city. It is on the community to do their thing if Mr. Brown can open up the building with somebody there. End of statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Anyone else with public recognition on non-agenda-related items?
I'm Angela Boone. I live at 1137 Woodville Drive. Clearview Park. I just don't understand why it has taken so long. Okay, he said that we could get scouts over there. As long as you got enough people that you can employ, it ain't no different than the civic center. Y'all got all of them people over there employed. I don't know if they're uncles and aunts and nieces and nephews or grandma and great niece or whoever, but they're all over there, they're getting paid. My granddaughter's not over there. My niece's not over there. My first cousin's not over there. Okay, so if Clearview Park gets up and running, why can't we have some of our people employed and get them played at 15 years old, 16 years old? We're not dumb by no means. So like he said, it's going to have to be in budget. So have y'all even thought about that yet? Because we're not dumb. We far from being dumb. We got more time behind us than we have in front of us. So why haven't the building been able to be used? Every time that someone has tried to get the Clearview Park for like, I know six or seven years ago, we have been told, I personally have been told, ma'am, we cannot open Clearview Park because we don't have anybody to run it. Ma'am, we can't open the Clearview Park because it doesn't have any heat. Well, ma'am, are we just not renting out the Clearview Park because it doesn't have any air? And I think the last time that someone rented it for a, a community thing, they had to go and purchase an additional amount of insurance that cost them $500 before y'all would even, whoever would even give them the okay to have that community thing over there. It was some kind of social club. So why is it that if I go to the civic center tomorrow and say, hey, I need to use the building for a baby shower next week, I'm going to get told no?
Uh, you can rent it. You can rent, I mean, you can rent.
Since when? Because they had stopped that.
Well.
Well, you can't rent it. That's been, I don't know if y'all know, but that's been like that for five, six years.
What Mr. Brown's saying, I'm sorry.
We cannot rent it.
It was closed for about a year because of COVID. But it's open now. You can rent it unless somebody has it.
I called today and they said they, they would not rent.
Did, did somebody already have it?
No, they said they are not renting it because of COVID. Cannot.
It's been like this for two years.
I'll get that straight tomorrow.
Six years.
Thank you.
We even tried to get it before COVID, three years in a row, because we was going to have like a Sabbath class thing over there during Christmas. They told us that they could not let us rent because they didn't have enough to rent. I told, at that time, Paige, what's her name?
Jackson. Well, yeah, you really should be at the mic if you're commenting, but let me say this, I've been to several things over there. So the fact that people are being told that is certainly a disconnect of which I was not aware. And I, has been my experience that whenever someone was using that for whatever kind of event, that no staff worked it anyway. So I don't know why staff would be key to having, being able to use that building. I don't understand that communication. So, uh, Mr. Brown says he will take care of it. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Okay, we're getting to the end of the meeting. This council's going groan, but I did miss Mayor's comments. I certainly wanted to mention the naming of the street after Pastor Jackson. I wanted to mention Freedom of, of Freedom Church's anniversary and then a couple of events. I'll go really quickly. The American Red Cross Blood Drive is tomorrow at the Civic Center from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Sumner County Irish Festival, Bloodsauce Historic Four Park is today, excuse me, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Chuck Stewart's birthday is on the 6th. Sumner County Candidate Forum for County Offices at Wall State Community College, 6 to 8 on the 10th. Councilman Fan's birthday on the 11th, the Shamrock Run on the 12th. And my favorite day of the year, daylight savings time starts on the 13th.
And Paige Brown's birthday on the 7th.
Can't wait. With that, if no one else has anything, I would entertain a motion. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overtone, second by Councilman Alan Sandor. All in favor, say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening. Be safe, be kind. Good night.